Limited to ministerial examination of the applications conforming to all applicable code provisions. The staff report for an agenda item may include conditions, exceptions, or modifications. The commission may approve the item with all staff report conditions, exceptions, or modifications, including additional measures regarding the item as imposed by the commission. Otherwise, the staff report with all modifications, exceptions, and conditions is approved, and the application shall comply with all provisions of the staff report. Commissioners will consider all agenda items, other than subdivision items, in the form of a public hearing. The normal process is as follow. First, the commission will hear a staff report followed by a statement from the applicant. Then, members of the public may ask, may speak, followed by final statement from the applicant. Finally, the matter will be closed for further discussion for a motion among the commission. The commission shall then make a recommendation that will be forwarded to city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Reyes. Mr. Segovia, any changes to the agenda?
Chairman, there are no changes.
No changes? All right, good. Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna open it up for a public comment. If there's anybody here in the public or on the phone that would like to make a comment to us on items that are not on this agenda. I have a list of people that want to speak towards the agenda, but that would like to address this commission that are not on the agenda. If you're on the phone, star six to unmute. One more time, public comment, star six to unmute. Seeing and hearing none, public comment is closed, and we move to the consent agenda. Commissioners?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we move to item number three, and for that, we have Mr. Saul Fontes.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission. Saul Fontes with planning and inspections. Item three on the agenda is Francisco Torres subdivision involving a major combination application. Here's... Start without having some difficulties. Thank you. Next slide, please. Sorry, next slide, please. Here's an aerial view of the development. This development is outside city limits, and it is east of Westside Drive and north of Art Craft Road, and is within the El Paso's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Next slide. Here we have an aerial view showing the subdivision superimposed over the aerial imagery. The applicant is proposing to subdivide 5.66 acres of land into two lots. Lots are 2.66 and 3 acres in size. Drainage will be provided by way of onsite ponding. Access to the subdivision shall be restricted to only Strawberry Lane. There will be no access through Westside Drive due to a lateral abutting of the property. And this application was reviewed under the current subdivision code. Next slide. Here's an image of the preliminary plat. Next slide. Here, an image of the final plat. Next slide. The applicant is requesting one exception pursuant to the El Paso City Code, and that is to where the construction of five feet of sidewalk along Strawberry Lane. Next slide. Here, we have the proposed cross-section for Strawberry Lane. The cross-section complies with the required 48, uh, 48 feet of right-of-way, but it's missing five feet of sidewalk. Next slide. Here, we have the existing conditions for Strawberry Lane. Next slide. And the exception request meets the criteria under El Paso City Code Title 19. Next slide. And to conclude, staff recommends approval of Francisco Torres subdivision on a major combination basis, and recommends approval of the exception being requested from the CPC. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fontes. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Fontes?
Yes, I have a question. You said that it's meeting the O3 cross-section requirements?
Correct, yes. It meets the 40, the base minimum right-of-way for this cross-section will be 48, 48 feet, which it meets. It's providing 60 feet of right-of-way, however, it's missing five feet of sidewalk. Therefore, triggering the exception.
I, I don't understand what I'm missing that they don't need, like, that doesn't show a sidewalk. Is there something in the transportation plan that shows that they need one?
Correct, yes. The minimum requirement for this cross-section would be five feet of sidewalk.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? See, now, I have a couple. There's no sidewalks throughout that whole area, correct?
Correct.
No sidewalks, okay. My other one is, um, can in the near future, open the, can they open up, um, entrance, exit to Westside Road?
Currently, there, there's a lateral existing through the, through that side of Westside. There is, right, they're, they're abutting the lateral, so there is no access currently. I mean, maybe in the, in the near future, I mean, that'd be something that they would need to coordinate with the water improvement district. But per the plat, there is a note stating that access will only be through Strawberry Lane.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so that, that was something. So often, if there's no notes on a plat, then nothing would restrict it, but since there's a note, or what we call a restricted access easement, that would prohibit any access, but it sounds like there's a note on the plat, so access would not be allowed onto Westside Drive. That would have to be amended if proposed in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions, commissioners? See, none. Thank you, Mr. Fontes. Can we hear from the applicant? The representative? I think he is on the phone, Mr. Wall. Star six to unmute, Mr. Wall? Do we s... Do we have anybody? No. Do we have anybody on the phone, Mr. Smith? Can you tell?
Yeah, it looks like just city staff is on the phone. I know Mr. Wall was coordinating with city staff this morning to get the link.
Because I have it here.
So, Mr. Wall indicated he'd be attending this meeting?
Correct, yes. He indicated he would be attending virtually.
Unless there are any questions for the applicant, we can postpone this item, but if not, I would suggest we consider action.
Commissioner Masood?
I mean, uh, it's a pretty simple subdivision, and everything that is being requested is very common sense, including the exception that he's asking on the sidewalk. There is no sidewalks in that whole area, and it would be entirely impossible to connect to Westside Drive now that there's a note on the plat, and, and of course, the cost to cross a lateral is economically unfeasible for a two-lot subdivision. So, I, I would, you know, I mean, we could move to vote on the case.
Well, I, I understand that, but, um, staff made the effort, and all of us made the effort to be here, and, um, golly gee, I mean, he's the one that called this. He's the one that's representing the owners. He should be on the phone. He should be here present. That's my only concern. I mean, come on. I'm here, you're all here, and he's not here?
Chair, yes, he, he actually called me directly and was asking for the link. Sal did forward it to him. He may be having some problems getting in. But, yeah, he, he was telling me that he wanted to speak, so I don't know if he's showing there or not.
So, um, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, if, if, if the commission desires, we can table this item till later in the agenda, so we can do, make an effort to get Mr. Wall on, on the line. But this does have to be acted on today.
Right. Commissioners, item number three is before us.
Motion to approve with the sidewalk request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with a sidewalk exemption?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Ms. Elsa?
All right, I will call your name for the vote on item number three. Badiel?
Aye.
Masood?
Aye.
Borrego?
Nay.
Hanson?
Aye.
Reyes?
Aye.
And Dobrofski?
Aye.
Five ayes and one nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, real quick, IT, there isn't a phone number asked to be admitted? Through Teams? Okay. Is that Mr. Wall on the line?
Yes.
Okay, may, may I ask that the item be reconsidered?
No, let's not. It was approved already. Let's just move forward. I just wanted to make a point, like we have before, that if we're here, we're here, we're here on time, and everybody's here on time, and, you know, it's the way it is, but it's a five-to-one vote, so it carries. I don't see us going back to it. Okay? So, we move on to number four, to public hearing. And, um, it'll be four and five sorted together. It's a release of conditions and a rezoning application, and for that, we have Mr. Samora.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Luis Samora with planning and inspections. So, today, we're, obviously, we're requesting to act on number four and five together. So, here we have the presentation. So, item four is rezoning for portion of, well, for the subject property located east of Resler and north of Simarong Canyon. And item five is a condition release, requesting to release all imposed conditions on the subject property. Now, it's working, so. So, the, here's the aerial imagery of the subject property. It shows it is vacant. It's only, only the portion in, outlined in yellow. Property is located on Resler, south of Trans Mountain. So, the current zoning for the part, subject property is C3 commercial. Again, there's some conditions imposed surrounding zoning, surrounding properties. You have to the north and to the east, some properties on R3A. Residential to the south across Simarong Canyon, it's on C3 commercial. And then to the west, we have M1, uh, light manufacturing across Resler. So, right now, the request is to resound the C3 to the R3A, so they will match the adjacent zoning district. Feature and land use map designation for this area is G4, suburban walkable. So, here we have the conceptual plan. Now, um, on the left, the bigger, well, I guess the, the bottom right, left, shows the, kind of, some name to the subject property, and then to the right, we have the, the entire scope of the, the project. So, again, right now, we're, the request is to rezone and to release all conditions on what's, uh, color red, which is outlined in yellow. But the site plan, conceptual plan obviously shows entire development, which is a proposed middle school for the Conatio ISB. So, again, the, the action today, the request is only for the red portion. Again, it's rezoning, and then there's a condition release request. So, there's two conditions kind of imposed on the, on the property, kind of, in different portions of it. One of them, it was imposing back in 2004, which was later amended in 2023, which some of the commissioners may, maybe recall going through this. So, technically, it's mostly for asking for landscaping buffers to kind of protect residential properties. So, back in, uh, 2023, we kind of, it was amended to kind of align it more with what was there and what was the request back then. The other condition was also imposed, well, actually, was an amendment to the existing conditions, back in 2023 again, and it's just kind of matching that other one. So, again, it's mostly just that, the buffer, landscaping buffer to protect residential properties from commercial activities. So, our analysis, so we looked into it again. Conditions were there to protect, and it proposed, again, it is on, currently is on as commercial, C3. So, there's some uses we wanted to protect from the neighborhood, and we kind of use that, recommend that condition to separate a little more, provide like a screening effect from residential, those things. So, obviously, the request is to resound from C3 to R3A. So, all those permitted commercial uses, then, will not be permitted anymore. And so, we see that then the conditions are no longer necessary for it. So, we, obviously, our condition is, we're, we're okay with releasing those conditions as the rezoning gets, gets through. So, the subject property, this is along across Simarong Canyon to the north. So, this subject property, again, it is vacant. There's kind of some elevation, uh, topography going through the site. And again, just as a reminder, we're only looking at a portion of the entire site, so the subject property kind of covers half of the, they have western portion of the entire, uh, school district property. So, we're only focusing on that. So, to the north and to the east, technically, we have the, the remaining property of, of the school district, which is for that proposed school site, which is, again, still vacant. Currently, it's on R3A already. To the south, it, it is still vacant as well, and same thing to the west across Resler. So, with the, there's no neighborhood association, recognized neighborhood association in the area. So, there was no notices to neighborhood associations. We're aware that there's an HOA, homeowners association, but that's not, uh, there's no requirement to notify them. We did send letters to all the property owners within 300 feet back in November 21st, letting them know the rezoning request and the condition release. At this time, we have received seven calls, one letter, and one email in opposition to the request. All of them is mostly traffic concerns. The access, having been there through Simarong Canyon, the neighborhood, well, the, the subdivision having limited access to get out of there, and then, obviously, the proposal, the school impacting all that thing. Safety for the kids, and things like that was what they kind of mentioned. So, here's a notice map, just to give you an idea who got notified. It is a small property, so obviously, there's not that much. We did send 12 notices to property owners, which included 17 properties. So, with this, staff recommendation is approval of the rezoning request and approval of the condition release request, releasing all conditions. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Samora. Mr. Samora, what we have before us is just that commercial, uh, property. The one that's zone commercial. And the release is also just for that commercial property.
Correct.
Nothing with a buffer zone on the R, R3. Nothing. Just our purview, our purview is just that corner in red.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Masood?
So, just to be clear, it is still going to be a school project? And, and the school wants to release it from the commercial so they can use the entire site for the school site?
Correct. So, uh, so it's basically a cleanup. They're going through the plating process as well, which requires them to be under the same zoning to avoid split zones. So, it's, it's been plotted as one entire property, this portion and the rest. And so, that's, they're basically downzoning from the C3 to the R3 to match everything.
But isn't schools exempt from having to rezone? I mean, they can be in any zone, right?
So, the, the school use is permitted by right already.
Okay.
The thing is, we run into, or the applicant runs into an issue plating, because technically, either they carve it out as two separate properties, or they match the zoning to have it as one.
I see. So, that's what they're doing. They're bringing it all to the R3A, so it'll be homogeneous? And then, they're still gonna be using it for a school and do away with all the commercials and the restrictions on the commercials?
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just like Mr. Samora said, to clean it up. We had a case that many years ago, a park in South Central wasn't cleaned up and zoning, and we had to clean it up, uh, a month or two ago, just to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. Any other questions, commissioners, for Mr. Samora? Thank you, Mr. Samora. Can we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Adrian Nontivettos with CSA Design Group for the record. We concur with staff comments and recommendations. I'm here if you have any questions.
Commissioners, questions?
Most of the concerns from people in the neighborhood are about traffic. Where are the drop-off pickup locations, the bus areas, things like that?
So, access is gonna be actually proposed on both Resler and Simarong Canyon. A TIA has been approved by the appropriate department. There is going, going to be internal circulation and queuing, so they have accommodated internal of the site for stacking. We're actually gonna have dual lanes for stacking. So, um, traffic has been considered. Again, the TIA has been approved. So, I think the school district has done a good job in, in, I guess, mitigating any traffic concerns the residents may have.
So, both streets, right? But which one is gonna be the main entrance?
So, primarily, I would say Simarong Canyon.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I'd just like to remind the commissioners that our purview today is just rezoning and release of conditions for that item in red. Any other concerns? I guess goes to the school district and, uh, city planning, correct, Mr. Smith?
Well, well, actually, city planning is, is limited on this too, because if it meets all building permits, we have to approve it as well. So, if there are any concerns, the school district would be the best, um, course to, uh, to, to voice those.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. So, you mentioned that the traffic impact study was approved?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean? I mean, does that mean you're gonna have free flow traffic? I mean, is it gonna be still a little bit congested? I mean, I mean, what, what's gonna be impact to, to?
The level of service did not change from the nearest intersection, which was Northern Pass and Resler. There's some timing, there's some retiming considerations that need, need to happen as a part of the development, but level of service remained the same. And again, the TIA was approved by Streets and Maintenance as a part of the, the review for the plating.
Level of service, what the level of service?
Right now, I think it was a C in the area.
And it didn't change, even with all this cool traffic?
No, sir. According to the, to the engineer who performed the study, no. Just retiming.
Rush hour, how schools get out? Didn't, didn't add anything?
They performed their analysis for AM and PM peak hours. So, again, retiming was the only recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
One question. Where's the closest middle school or the elementary school currently?
Brown, but that is EPISD. This is Conatio.
There, there is a school off Northern Pass for Reyes Elementary School, near the corner of Northern Pass and, um, Pas El Donorte.
So, they'll be redirected to this?
No, that, that's an elementary school. This one here is a middle school.
Any other questions? You need time to think?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. We're gonna take the public hearing for both items number four and number five. And our first speaker will be... Ray Whitkey?
Whitney.
Whitney? Okay.
Hello. Good evening.
Ms. Whitney, before you start, state your name. You have three minutes, and, uh, Mr. Smith will keep tab of time.
Okay, thank you. My name is Whitely Miles Ray. I'm a resident of the Simarong Canyon area. I'm also speaking on behalf of many concerned neighbors who could not attend today. Many residents have voiced their concerns through our community groups and the Square app, and the truth is, we're just regular citizens trying to navigate a process we're not familiar with. But we do recognize when something creates a safety issue for our family, and that's why I'm here. We appreciate the value of a new middle school, and we are not opposed to the school itself. However, the current site raises serious concerns that should be addressed before final approval to protect both safety and quality of life surrounding the residence. So, number one, the traffic flow and the daily choke point. We currently only have two entrances in and out of the neighborhood. The proposed layout places the bus loop, parent drop-off, and primary parking areas directly on Simarong Canyon Drive, uh, which is only one of the two entrances we have. Routing that volume of traffic into the residential road, not built for it, will create a daily choke point daily. Cars will stack, turning movements will conflict, and families trying to simply get to their home will have a gridlock. This creates substantial risk for families entering and exiting, children walking or biking the school, trail runners and cyclists also because there's a major trail right there. Morning and afternoon congestion will be unavoidable, and worse, it could compromise emergency vehicle access. This is why we are asking the city to reconsider routing the school to a different location or, um, to reroute the primary entrance to Resler. The other concern is the trail safety. It's a very high-traffic area with runners and cyclists. The current design mixes heavy traffic and continuous pedestrian bike flow. And I can tell you now, whenever I exit out of this spot on a daily basis, it's also a lot of trees, and it's even hard for me just as a, a regular car to see pedestrians that are running on that trail. I believe it's called the Bedo Trail. Also, lastly, the impact from the athletic facilities. As you mentioned, it is a middle school. It's not an elementary school. So, that's, it has a full track, a field, baseball area, and event spaces. That means activity will extend into the early mornings, afternoon, school, after-school, in the evenings, and probably on the weekend. This increases the likelihood of overflow parking into our, into the neighborhood, late-night noises, and lighting, which you can see it's pushed up behind, like, actual resonance, and continuous vehicle flow. We're just asking that there, this can be reconsidered because the project has not yet been approved by the city council. We respectfully request a full review of the traffic plan, consideration of alternate access points, safety improvements for trail crossings, conditions preventing school traffic from using Simarong Canyon Drive as a cut-through, restrictions on event parking within the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this matter? Please step up to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes, and Mr. Smith will keep tab.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Gustavo Mendoza. I'm also a resident on the Simarong Canyon area. I actually live on Simarong Canyon Drive, uh, which I was really shocked to hear that's gonna be considered the main drop-off, um, road for, for the kids. I live right across the park. Uh, you can see it right, right over there. So, I'm not within the range of the 300 feet, but it's obvious that this project is gonna impact the whole community. So, um, just like my fellow neighbor just stated, it's not only about the dropping off or picking up hours, it's just like throughout the whole, the whole day. Since I live in that intersection, I can see the heavy traffic that we already have because, uh, that's the only entrance for our community. So, and it's like huge community. So, what I want to, to prove here is that this project is not only going to impact all those residences within that, that range. It's gonna impact the whole community. We already have, uh, since I walk the park every day, I already see, you know, the, the different, um, risks and issues that we already have already with kids running around. We see a lot of, uh, security hazards. So, I can only imagine how this is going to look whenever we have, you know, middle, uh, school children roaming around unsupervised. I'd like to quote, um, really fast, one of my neighbor's, um, concerns. She's a former school principal. So, I wanna, I wanna read this real fast. Here's at least a possible reason of how it may impact us. Safety, only two narrow entrances in and out. Number two, noise and pollution due to increase in traffic and construction crews. Number three, bus routes. Number four, increased property taxes for construction delays. If a Texas school construction project exceeds the bond amount, the school district is responsible for covering the additional costs, usually by... for covering the additional costs, usually by using its general operating fund for the short term and/or by issuing another bond or raising taxes. The district's general operating budget pays for day-to-day expenses, but funds may be relocated for the overage. If the project overruns significantly, a new border-approved bond measure may be necessary. How the school district handles the overage? Using the operating fund initially, the school district can use its general operating fund to cover the immediate shortfall. However, this fund is primarily for daily expenses like salaries and utilities, so it's not sustainable solution for large construction costs.
Sir, you've reached your three minutes.
I'll allow him to finish that quote.
I'm going to move on. Issuing new bonds or raising taxes. If the overage is substantial, the school district's board of directors can propose another bond measure to voters. If approved, this will provide the necessary funds to complete the project, but it requires another vote and commitment to repay the new debt through taxes.
That's the end of the quote?
That's the end of the quote.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment? Sir? Public comment?
Oh, no, I just, well, can I make one more statement just to?
Go ahead.
So yes, I appreciate the concerns brought up by the residents. Of course, we'll relay that to the district. Again, some of those concerns exceed the purview of today's case, which is simply a rezone case to clean up a split zone. So I would appreciate if you would reconsider that as the final consideration to be heard. Thank you.
All right. Any more public comment? Anybody on the phone? Star six to unmute. One more time, public comment for items number four and five. If you're on the phone, star six to unmute. Seeing and hearing none. The public hearing for items number four and number five is closed. Commissioners will take four and five, but please state on the rezoning and on the condition of the release, if you make a motion.
Move to approve item number four and number five as requested.
We have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning and also on the condition of release. Questions? Commissioners, concerns? Now's the time to do it.
Are we in the discussion?
We are in the discussion. Commissioner Hanson?
I, just amongst us, would like to say it's pretty rare for a zoning down to come in front of us, to the point where I was, until we were told that the reasoning was for replodding, that replodding always has to have the same zoning. I was like, why do they want to go down? I'm happy that they didn't ask to bring everything to C3 rather than just bring this parcel to R3A. As far as traffic concerns in the future, I understand that right now, if it goes forward as planned, it creates its own traffic problem, but meaning because it won't be C3, there will not be certain high-traffic uses allowed if this plan doesn't go forward or if it changes in the future. And of course, I'm talking amongst us because that is what I'm allowed to do.
And?
Commissioner Masood?
Just to add to what Commissioner Hanson has mentioned, I mean, there's enough land that is already suitable for the school for them to have two entrances, one on Wrestler and one on Cimarron. So having to rezon this smaller portion from C3 to R3A to clean up, as they say, technical, it does not solve anything of the concerns. All the concerns should really be directed to the school district. It's completely out of our purview of what we're approving today.
Commissioner Badil?
So if we don't approve the rezoning, does that force them to make changes to the traffic study?
I don't think so.
I don't think so because the traffic impact study's already been?
Done.
Done.
And the city has already basically blessed it that it does not change the level of service
on that, both roads.
Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Reyes?
I think there is a lot of valid concerns from the residents. I mean, I'll be concerned, too, they're going to put a school down the street and a lot of traffic, especially in, you know, in the mornings and the afternoons. I, you know, I would assume that the school district has had public meetings to get input on all these concerns. There's always ways to mitigate problems, traffic problems. I don't know whether that's been done to, you know, at least to address these concerns. I mean, I think you mentioned they have internal circulation. I think that would help a lot. The cars aren't going to be, you know, pick up on the street, but I think it's something that needs to happen through development of the project is to take input from the public to address those concerns as they move through the process of designing the school. So I don't know if it's been done, but if it's not, it probably should happen, and it's just something to think to address, you know, before they move forward to the residents feel comfortable with the new school and the traffic.
But I think, if I may, as the city did outreach as they were making, moving forward with this plan, the outreach was to like a vacant circle. I mean, it didn't seem like they reached out to very many.
I'm talking the school itself, I mean, the school.
Right.
The school itself should have meetings. I mean, I don't know. They usually have public meetings to take public input.
My understanding is Procedio who's managing, is basically managing the project as a whole?
Can you step up to the mic so we can record?
Adrian Nottevedos again for the record. So yes, my understanding is Procedio who's managing the overall project for the district has reached out to the public and has had at least one community meeting that I'm aware of. So yes, there has been some public outreach on the district side that I can speak to.
All right. But to your concern, Commissioner Badil, the city's only involved in the rezoning and the release of the application. The planning of the school and the decision to buy all that land, that's a school district. I would also say that for anybody in the public, show me a school, whether it's elementary, high school, middle school, college, where there's no traffic around it. There's always traffic around all the schools. All the schools that I've been involved, the school that I'm involved right now, Texas Tech, Jefferson, I mean, it is crazy there, and, but it's a good crazy. It's to educate our kids. They need that school there. That's my, and they will, I think the school district, being a former school board member, goes beyond to make sure that the kids are safe, that it's done correctly. Maybe not 100%, but again, as a former school board member, that's what I would push for. Any other comments, commissioners? We'll go to the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We move on to item number six.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, for four and five, right?
That's four and five. That's four and five, correct. And for that, we have Ms. Perez.
Good afternoon, Chairman members of the commission. Blanca Perez with Planning and Inspections. Item number six on today's agenda is a special permit request for the property located at 5,000 Stan Roberts Avenue. The subject property consists of two vacant parcels. The eastern parcel is approximately 48 acres, and the western parcel is approximately 80 acres. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow the expansion of a solar major utility facility within the ranch and farm zoning district. A solar facility is not permitted by right in this district, which is why a special permit is required. The existing solar farm on the property was previously approved. Parcel one on the east is proposed to contain 15,834 solar panels with direct access from Stan Roberts Avenue. Parcel two on the west is proposed to contain 29,562 solar panels with direct access from Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. No modifications are proposed to the existing facility. This request is strictly for the expansion onto the adjacent parcels, and the site plan is being reviewed for compliance, and it is binding. This slide shows the proposed panel elevations. And here you can see the site plan overlaid on the aerial image. These photos show the subject property as viewed from Stan Roberts Avenue and Martin Luther King Boulevard. To the north, west, and east, properties are zoned ranch and farm and are currently vacant. To the south, properties are zoned GMU and are also vacant. However, this area is proposed for future solar expansion approved under a master zoning plan. And between the two parcels is property zoned M2 heavy manufacturing, where the Newman Power Station operated by El Paso Electric is currently located. The subject property does not lie within any neighborhood associations, and public notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on November 19, 2025. And as of November 26, 2025, the planning division has received two calls of inquiry but has not received any communication in support or opposition to the request. With that, staff recommends approval of the detailed site development plan and the special permit request. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Perez? No? I did. I thought they'll pass a water, manage water. Now they're into solar? Are they going to start piping in hot water?
It is managed by El Paso Water, but El Paso Electric is the one applying.
Because it says here that the? Huh? I understand it, but it said the property owner is, city of El Paso, managed by El Paso Water. Okay.
That's always the case. Most properties that El Paso Water manages are owned by the city of El Paso.
I understand that. I understand that. But what I'm saying is that this is for solar and what's going on here? But somebody clarified it, that it's being sold to El Paso Electric. Okay. So any other questions for Ms. Perez? Thank you, Ms. Perez. Can we hear from the applicant? For the representative?
Good afternoon. George Halu with SLI Engineering, representing El Paso Electric. El Paso Electric is leasing it from El Paso Water to produce, to keep up with the demand on the electrical, on the northeast side of the city. And I'm here, and I agree with all staff comments.
So what you're saying is that El Paso Electric is going to own those?
Is leasing the land?
Leasing the land so they can operate the solar panels?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Understood. Questions for the applicant? No? Everything hunky-dory?
I calculated it super quickly, and it's going to be 142 megawatts?
I'm not an electrical engineer, and I can attest to that.
Thank you.
You know, way more than me.
142 megawatts?
142 megawatts?
Megawatts.
Yeah, but you just said meta, that is, they measuring gigawatts. So that keeps their lights on, but it doesn't run them. Just curious.
Any other concerns, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is another public hearing. If there's anybody in the public or on the phone that would like to talk in favor or against this item, now's the time to do so. Star six to unmute. One more time, public comment for item number six. Star six to unmute. Seeing and hearing none, public comment is closed. Commissioners, item number six is before us.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number six. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We now move to number seven. And for that, we have the one and only Kevin Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon again, Kevin Smith with Planning and Inspections for the record. So the last item on the agenda prior to the adjournment is a proposed amendment to Title 20, our zoning code. As the body that advises council on planning matters, this is within your purview to provide a recommendation with this before it goes to city council. This is a new definition, our zoning code for short-term rentals. A little bit of background on this is, this item actually has been discussed by city council for a number of years. The most recent item was late October, where staff, along with the Greater El Paso Association of Realtors, as well as the El Paso Short-Term Rental Alliance, provided an update to city council on short-term rentals. I'd like to thank both of those organizations for their feedback, and they've been great partners throughout this process as we try to figure out short-term rentals here in El Paso. So at that meeting, staff presented a recommendation to create a definition for short-term rentals in the zoning code, and I'll go into the reason why here in a moment. And this item before you is the definition that we're recommending, and will be planned and bringing forward to the city council. So currently, and these are typically what are called, you know, a lot of people associate with a lot of the platforms, Airbnb or Verbo. And so short-term rentals, as current, is not classified or defined in our city code. We've been classifying them under the definition or the umbrella of bed and breakfast establishments. And so it's not a perfect fit. It doesn't fit, and I believe, as many of you are aware, short-term rentals have really increased in popularity, let me just say, over the past few years, especially with the pandemic. A lot of them spiked, you know, around the country. And the bed and breakfast definition, what it requires, it's a special permit, and that would require, obviously, as you've seen before, you special permits. It requires notification of 300 feet and hearing by city council at the end of the day. So the recommendation is what's before you on the screen, to create a new definition in our city code. It has been shown, provided to you before, but it means any residential use, and a lot of the next ones are just the residential uses that would apply, which include a single-family, duplex accessory structure, a unit in apartment multifamily residential building, a mixed-use residential building, or condominium building, or any portion thereof used for lodging for documents for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. And just to clarify, too, this is part of the definition that would be in the city code, is to clarify that short-term rental is not a bed and breakfast, so just separating that, as well as, as there are many different uses there, the zoning standard for the base residential use shall apply. So if it's a single family, then the standards for the single family shall apply. If it's a condominium or a apartment complex, the respective standards will apply for those. So that is what's before you for consideration today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Commissioner Reyes?
So 30 days, I guess that's typically most apartments are usually 30 days, right? You know, you pay monthly for 30 days. So anything less than that, you consider it, what do you call it, short-term?
Yeah, it, again, that generally what is accepted along the short-term rental industry across a lot of the state is that period of 30 days or less. Otherwise, then it would bump into the more of the long-term rental, which would be more of an apartment or renting of a house. That wouldn't be applied. This does not apply to hotels, motels. Those are commercial ventures. This is for the residential use.
And how does this benefit the city, the definition, how would that be used, I mean, in terms of, I mean, what the purpose of having this separated out?
Technically, short-term rentals have been operating improperly for years, technically. They needed a special permit. Right now, this would allow them to operate by right. At that meeting in October, we did analysis, too, working with our 311, who receives complaints, as well as our police department, our code enforcement, to see if there are any issues here in El Paso. And generally, we have not found any concerns. There have been some one-offs, obviously, as with any use, but There have been some one-offs, obviously, as with any, any use, but overall, they've been operating pretty quietly here in the city of El Paso. I, I just want to clarify that this does not apply to houses that are rented for parties, for swimming pools. Those are not allowed. Okay? So that does not, if, if that's being used or being conducted there, that is not allowed. And we, as a city, need, need to know about it so that we can conduct proper enforcement activities there.
Okay, one last question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you have this definition now, but very, I mean, this very short. I mean, is there any other requirement you're going to have that in order to operate under this type of, if you have a list of things you have to, you know, meet?
As we, as we've looked here in the city of El Paso, and then we also conducted research throughout other cities in Texas, there's a whole lot of different standards, I guess, that, that they apply. Again, as I mentioned before, as the research that was conducted by some of our fellow departments is we have not found there to be any large issues with them being a nuisance or being a crime generator here in the city. So we're not recommending any additional requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Masood, turn your mic on, please. Speak to it.
Okay. So the zoning standard for the, you know, like using the zoning standards for the short term, you're saying the base residential use will apply, meaning if it's in a, say, R two zoning, all the owner needs to comply with is whatever that zoning requires and then they can operate a short-term Airbnb if it's not restricted by their homeowner association or by their covenants for that matter.
That, that is correct. The, it's not, it is not saying that you can do an apartment there because again, the base standards would apply. So in, in the definition, say picking on the R two, for, for example, the single family is, would almost be it.
Yeah, so can only one house can be just one short-term?
Correct.
Cannot be split into four different rooms?
Correct.
And rented it separately, I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dubrowoski.
Yes. Speaking to that same subject, I'm just curious about the, or any portion thereof, sort of section of the clause, because that implies to me that a single-family house could sort of be subdivided in a way to create multiple short-term rental units. Is that accurate to say or?
So I, I believe that, as we look at the definition in entirety, it covers all the residential uses that the, the code allows, which include items such as apartments, condominiums. So you may have certain, in that type of unit where a, a portion may be used for short-term rentals, others maybe for long-term. Often, like for an accessory structure, you may have a single family on that property. If an accessory structure is on there, that may be rented there.
Well, along the lines of what we just discussed, I have a couple neighbors that have a house divided in two and a basement. So there's three in one and you would think it's just a regular house. And they're allowed to rent. Yeah? So it's kind of going along your lines. And there's a family that lives there, but, you know, to make extra money, half of the house, I'll rent it out and the basement, I'll also rent it out. That's covered in this. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioner Felipe to a planning inspection. That is not a short-term rental. So you can still rent your house. So that's not covered on the year. So if you have a property that you're renting, you can still do that, but short-term rental is similar. And I'm going to turn over to our legal department as well. It's akin to just having a motel or hotel rented on a short-term basis. So this is, this is not preventing you from renting your property as a, as a landlord.
Okay. Another concern is you talked about swimming pool parties. Earlier this year in our district, District Two, Commissioner, Representative Acevedo had a meeting and this was talked about, about a lot of people that have pools rented out that evening to have parties. And it's a big old distraction for the neighborhood and whatnot. And the way to get around that now, if we defined it here, well, I'll rent short-term for 24 hours. Not going to have my party all night long in the pool, you know? Next day, we're out of there. Would that be permissible?
I'd say no. Again, there are certain standards have to be met across all the zoning districts. So if they're being a nuisance, such as creating excess noise, there is a difference I, I want to add, talking about swimming pools real quick, is there are different standards between a commercial swimming pool and a residential swimming pool. The commercial swimming pools need to be tested for the chemicals. It needs to make sure there's proper safety equipment. There needs to be ADA accessibilities, restrooms, and which don't typically apply to residential structures. So again, if that is happening, then the, the city needs to be made aware so that we can, like I mentioned, enforce appropriately on that property.
So rentals of swimming pools is illegal?
It is illegal.
Residential swimming pools?
Of residential swimming pools, it is illegal.
Okay.
Currently in the code.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have some.
Have some?
No, I have lots.
Commissioner Hanson.
Go ahead.
Usually, under, like, I was under the impression that usually when definitions of short-term rentals are introduced, it's for restriction purposes because they want to put into the code, like, you have to pay certain taxes, you can't have this as your secondary, like, this can't be an investment opportunity without you having to essentially contribute to the community in a different way. But it sounds like that is the opposite of the intent of this definition.
Well, I, I was, I would, like I mentioned before, as we looked at it, again, short-term rentals have not posed a, have, have not created a nuisance here in the city of El Paso. There are other cities where they have and they have stricter requirements. And my understanding is if there are, if there was a documented problem of short-term rentals, whether them being a nuisance or them creating crime, then the city can then evaluate those. But because there's no documented issues with them right now, we have to do the base requirements.
So why are we not addressing those issues before they happen?
Again.
I read this, I, I, I went through this as if I was somebody trying to get around taxes, like if I was in California, if I was in LA and I was trying to be like, but this is not a short-term rental. So that, that, like, I, I wasn't sure why you put bed and breakfast specifically. So I put, it doesn't count if it's a hotel motel, transitional emergency shelter, medical and assisted living, workhouse or corporate facility. So like, those are things that specifically don't count because if you're just like, oh, they're staying at a hotel, I don't know. I don't know. I, I feel like lots of people could get around this and then we have to go through a long process of changing it if it is a problem.
Yeah, again, the, it, it's only covering the residential uses. Those other uses are addressed through other means, either their commercial ventures or their medical facilities serving the population of El Paso. These are strictly the ones where typically we, we know them as the, the homes, the single-family homes that are being rented out here in the city. So again, as, as the standards range throughout the, the state of Texas, I'm only focused on the state of Texas here, in terms of the requirements, there has been extremes from one to the other. But again, as I mentioned, there has not been an evidence of crime or being a nuisance here in the city of El Paso. And there are approximately 2,000 of these operating in the city of El Paso. And the crime was very minimal.
Russell Abelin, Assistant City Attorney. So I think, you know, short-term rentals are a really broad issue and this is something that council has been looking at, as Kevin said, along with the Short Term Rental Alliance and, and GEPAR and all these interest groups. Kind of the main thing after looking at it, everything that council said is like, well, we don't even have a definition for short-term rentals. And so their direction at the last city council meeting was for staff to come up with a definition for short-term rentals. And as Kevin said, you know, there hasn't been one. As we know, short-term rentals have been around for quite a long time. They're throughout the city. We, and we've been, haven't had a, a classification for them. So basically, the, the only thing council directed at this time was come up with a definition. And so, you know, further regulation or, or anything like that, hasn't been directed by council at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? No? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion. If this is what we want to call it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add short-term rental to the definition. Right? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, everyone.
Commissioners, one more motion, please.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'm sure there's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.